I call this May the 4th meeting of the Paducah Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Welcome all of you and ask that you please stand and join us as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Summer, we call the roll, please.
Mr. Benbury?
Here.
Mr. Bradford?
Here.
Mr. Morrison?
Ms. Schramke?
Here.
Mr. Shadle?
Here.
Mr. Wade?
Here.
Chair Chrisillas?
Here.
Mr. Shadle, I think you have the minutes motion.
I move that the reading of the minutes for April 20th, 2015 be waived and that the minutes of said meeting is prepared by the Secretary be approved as written.
Counsel did point out to us that we have one small change that we need to make on the minutes, and if that is with your approval, then we will do that. In the section where it says, "Motion was seconded by member Benbury and adopted, abstain," actually, Mr. Bradford recused himself. He did not acquiesce himself. So that's, it's a minor point, but it needs to be changed to be official, so. Are there any other corrections, changes? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Benbury?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Chair Chrisillas?
Aye.
Mr. Wade, you have a motion for us?
Yes, I move that this commission remove from the table the application of Great Rivers LLC.
Second.
Second by Schramke. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Benbury?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Chair Chrisillas?
Aye.
And then you have a second motion.
Yes, I do. I move that this commission receive and file the application of Great Rivers LLC for approval of four window signs and a freestanding sign in the A-1 Civic Center Zone located at 401 Washington Street.
Second.
Second by Benbury. Now, discussion.
Mr. Summers, within the A-1 district, is there a limitation to signage, square foot, square footage?
No. Just on height, which is 12 square feet. Everything else falls under the purview of the planning commission.
You just said 12 square feet. You mean 12 linear feet?
No, 12 feet high.
12 feet high?
Mm-hmm.
12 linear feet high, okay.
But as far as square footage, that's up to you all.
Within a comparable business district in downtown, is there a maximum square footage?
The B-2T for wall signage is 50 square feet. The B-2 zone is 20% of the facade.
And do we know the square footage of these window signs as well as the freestanding side sign?
The freestanding is 32 square feet, I believe. I did have clay. Do you know the square footage of your window signs?
I think they're 3 feet wide by 10 feet tall, 30 square feet, or times 4, 120.
Where is the freestanding? I mean, I'm seeing the windows.
It's behind the building. It's on this picture here.
Oh.
If you're coming down 4.
Free sign, the freestanding sign is 30.
32 square feet.
32 square.
4 by 8.
4 by 8.
Mm-hmm.
I think I'm confused on one issue. When we spoke about this before, reading staff's report, you referred to them as signs. But yet, in the request that was submitted to us, they were referred to as a window treatment. I mean, what are they? Are they signs? Are they window treatments?
I mean... They are signed based on the definition that we have, which is any name, identification, description, display, illustration, or device which is affixed to or represented directly or indirectly upon a building, structure, or land in view of the general public and which directs attention to a product, place, activity, person, institution, or business, or otherwise provides information to the public. So, under our definition, yes, they are a sign.
When this came before the commission and was tabled, as I recall, it was the window signs only. But then subsequent to that, we now approached about the freestanding sign. When did that, was that installed at the same time as the window signs, or is that...
Sir, could you step to the podium, please? We had several questions last time and didn't have anyone to ask them of, so...
The freestanding sign was probably put in February. Previous to the window treatment.
And when were the window treatments installed?
Three, we started that three weeks ago, and Mr. Summer alerted us to the fact that we needed to come before the committee.
But the window treatments, put them in three weeks ago?
We started it, yes. And we stopped when, we had two of them up and there's two more, and we stopped the process.
Somebody told me that this is, you know, the window treatment idea is that it's not a sign, but it's like a temporary type thing. But we really actually have limitations on what temporary is defined as, and I don't think you're really talking about making these temporary. You're really talking about putting them up there for good, are you not?
Correct.
Okay.
But having said that, I guess you can take them, they can take them down or change them or do whatever once we have the approval of them being a sign.
But the definition, as Mr. Summers said, is they are a sign. They're not a window treatment.
Do these fall under any of the more specific definitions for signs that are in our sign ordinance? I know there's several different classifications.
They, they could be a window sign, and normally, that's 30% of the window. But in the A-1 zone, they can be bigger than that with you all's approval.
Does the tran, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Does the transparency affect that percentage covering?
No, not, not, no, that's your answer.
Well, and I think the thing about the transparency is they're transparent from the inside looking out, but not from the outside looking in.
Correct.
Do we know the gross dimensions of the wall within the window, in which the windows are on to be able to get that percentage that you just mentioned?
I don't have that, but I could get it for you all.
And just for my edification, setting the window signs aside for just a moment, a permit or approval would be needed for the freestanding sign by itself, right?
Downstairs and fire prevention.
Exactly.
Okay. And that first started in February? Okay.
So what we're talking about now is the one that we had tabled. We'll then be talking about the freestanding that is here. Are we asking for all of them together?
They're all together.
Yeah. We're more or less setting a precedence for these, I would think.
Not, well, it's, the A-1 is always a case-by-case basis. For example, when you all heard in McCracken County Library back in December, that's not indicative of every type of window or of every sign case you're going to have in the A-1 zone. So it will be more or less case-by-case in the A-1.
Well, using your percentage of the building, that sign on the library is a very small percentage of the whole size of the building as opposed to this, which I've got to believe is probably approaching 40 to 50% of the front.
That's what I would guess, 40.
I would think that, too, looking at that photo.
And the number is...
We're speaking of the four windows. Could the doors have these treatments also? I mean, if we approve this, it could be the doors inclusive of the windows. They wouldn't have to come back to us again. I mean, the doors are glass. The doors could have the same thing as that.
No, they'd have to come back to us again if they had new signs on the doors. The fact that you approved what is before you today, which is freestanding and/or window treatments, they, that's before us. Then if they wanted to do the door, then they could come back with another application.
I guess my issue is the gross size that we're talking about here. I don't think I have any trouble with the freestanding sign, albeit approval should have been requested back in February. But add into the size of the window signs, I do worry that we're setting a precedent when we're getting such a high...
Percentage.
Well, for whatever comparison we use to comparable zones in town, either it be by square footage, like you mentioned in the B-2T, or the percentage of the facade that it applies to, either one of those, we are far and above those if we were to use those as comparables for this project.
I agree, and also having them all combined, it's either pass or fail. I mean, I think that if the freestanding was a separate issue, I think we could look at it differently than...
Well, and I think, too, looking at it from another point of view, because of the zone that it's in, that zone was set aside to maintain more of a sign-free area. Not that signage couldn't be put in there, but that it's more of a governmental area. It's more of a community area as opposed to a, maybe, a business area. And I think that's the reason why it's been set aside, to be different from the other zones. Just my interpretation. I don't know how you all feel about that.
Perhaps just for clarity purposes, Mr. Key, what would it require for us to separate these? Would we need to do, find this and have it reintroduced to separate? I think you could windows or amend the motion, or...
I think your motion on the floor is for all of them. And I think you could come back and take it on a case-by-case or sign-by-sign basis if you chose to, because they're all before the board right now. We have a motion and a second for all, and what you could do is, you could vote on that motion and then come back with another motion, or motions, I mean, you could break it down to each window if you chose to.
Danny, if we end up in this situation six months from now, are we going to be talking about the same thing? Or are we going to say no?
And currently in the A-1, there's not a minimum or max, there's no requirement. It's just our approval, the approval of the board.
I think our dilemma is at this point, is that the windows have already been started on. We say half of them are installed already. So we're sort of, we've sort of got ourselves over barrel. Not over barrel, but a little predicament in looking into the future what's going to happen.
Well, we rely on, we relied on a local company that does this sort of thing all over Paducah and all over western Kentucky, and I think they even were surprised by, by this.
Were they surprised by the fact that the permit is needed?
Yes.
And on the freestanding also?
And that, well, that was another, we had two different companies. We had a company that did the freestanding sign.
Neither one of them got approval first, so, you know.
I guess I'm a little confused about where the linkage fell apart between knowing that there needed to be a permit and doing signs that weren't permitted.
Yeah, and, and I suppose we should have done a better job with our sign company in knowing that, you know, they knew there were certain permits. They felt like they fell under that percentage. And I think also, they thought window treatments were different than signs.
But there were two companies, so both times, their permits weren't requested. So, you know, that confuses me. Surely, they've done work in Paducah before.
Oh, yes, absolutely. I think it, with the front signs, it was probably a definition of sign or window treatment. You know, they, they put this opaque material on a lot of buildings to help with energy and reflectivity and things like that. So I think they really didn't realize it was a quote "sign."
So what I understand you saying, Dan, is that the motion that's on the table, we could now vote on, and depending upon how that vote went, we could then make new motions as we wish.
Because they've got all this before you. All this is...
Well, or to try to unwrap it from the axle, so to speak, I could amend my motion and separate it?
No.
Either that, or we could vote and then re...
You have to vote.
Oh, that's what I asked first, and I thought you said we could amend, we could, we could, I could make a motion, amend the motion.
You got a motion, but second, but you can amend the motion and they then second your amended motion, or we could go ahead and vote on it and then come back with another motion. I think we can attack that either way.
Okay. Do you have a preference?
Which way you prefer, which is cleaner?
We have to address Mr. Shadle's question, and what is the next move? If this comes back again the next meeting, are we going to say no?
Well, I don't know that we necessarily have to delay it to the next meeting. I think...
You mean a different...
Oh, a different group.
If we set a precedent.
Yes.
Right.
Every case is different, as Josh said.
Given that the ordinance doesn't state a specific minimum or maximum requirement, there's no percentage, there's only, as I understand it, 12 feet is the maximum height, I feel like we could approve this, and then if we decide as a planning commission that a percentage of a building facade is something we want to limit, then we can, we can restrict that, or we can deny it tonight and then decide to amend the ordinances. But it sounds to me like it's too vague, as written according to this planning commission's concerns. We want to be able to designate how much of a building facade is covered. But as it is written right now, it doesn't.
They're inside the ordinance with our approval.
What would it take to amend that, to change that?
It's a zoning text amendment. It would be as simple as going in and putting a number, whatever that magic number is, is in the text. It would come before you all for a recommendation to the plant, to the city commission, and they would actually change the ordinance.
Do we know the height of the top of the windows from the ground?
No. No, I really don't know.
You'd said that the signs are 3 by 10 feet.
Mm-hmm.
I would think they probably start at least a foot or two off the ground to begin with. I can't help but wonder if we've already hit that 12-foot maximum.
We didn't use the lower panel.
Did not use, so it's 10 feet beginning?
The top two panels?
Yeah.
Great.
We used those two, not the bottom ones.
Okay, so it's quite likely that the top of the sign of those windows exceeds of the 12-foot?
From the ground.
From the ground.
I would think that that would just apply probably to freestanding signs, not so much to the window sign, but that is, that isn't nailed down.
There's not such a thing as a window sign. There's a sign, correct?
No, we do have a definition for window sign. But in other zones, it's 30%, of the window, and they, one zone, it's whatever planning commission approves.
As long as it's not more than 12 feet in height?
The way it's written now, yes.
Okay, I'm trying to... I'd like to amend my motion to separate the freestanding sign from the window signs.
Second by Schramke.
And create two different votes, two different actions, as it were.
So the motion is to separate, not vote on anything, just to separate?
Well, and I guess we need to decide what we want to consider first. Do we want to consider the freestanding sign first and then the window signs? Does it make any difference to you?
Does it make any difference to me?
Okay.
So what you want to do is you want to separate and only have the vote the first time on the freestanding sign?
We can do that.
So, I mean, there are ways, I mean, either way, it doesn't matter.
Sure.
Whatever the motion, but we want to be specific with the motion.
Absolutely.
Which way we're doing.
First, let's just say the first vote would be for the freestanding sign, the second vote would be for the window signs.
Do we have to first vote?
We do have to vote on the amendment, yes. Would you call the roll, please, on the amendment?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify what the amendment would say, so he could get it down.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Benbury?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Chair Chrisillas?
Aye.
Now, again, going back, we now have the, we've approved the amendment to separate the two votes. The first vote will be on the freestanding sign. I just want to make sure everybody understands that. Does anybody have any more comments? Any more questions you'd like to ask before we vote?
Do we need to put a motion on the floor, though?
No, there is a motion on the floor that we just amended.
We just voted on it.
We have voted on the amendment.
Okay, so now you want a separate motion?
Okay, did we vote on the amendment?
Yes, we did.
That the first vote was to be the freestanding?
We did.
That's how I understood it.
The, I think the easiest thing to do is, since we got them separated, is just reread this up here, but instead of saying of four window signs and a freestanding sign, just say approval of a freestanding sign. And then on your second motion, leave out freestanding sign. That would be the easiest way to do it.
Yeah, that's...
Does that sound okay to you?
Yeah, that's simple.
Thank you. Do you want to read that for us again?
All right, I move that this commission receive and file the application of Great Rivers LLC for approval of a freestanding sign in the A-1 Civic Center Zone located at 401 Washington Street.
Second.
Second by Shadle.
It's overkill. We've duplicated it.
It's all right. We want to make sure that it's done correctly.
We're going to get it, make sure we are understood.
Absolutely. Does anybody have any questions? You ready for the vote? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Benbury?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Chair Chrisillas?
Aye.
Now, we're ready for the second vote. Second vote would be to approve the four window signs. Are we all clear on that? Do you have any questions? Anything else you'd like to ask? Do you want to read the motion again?
It will make you happy.
Yes, please.
I move that this commission receive and file the application of Great Rivers LLC for approval of four window signs in the A-1 Civic Center Zone located at 401 Washington Street.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Mr. Benbury. Questions? Comments? Ready for the vote? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wade?
No.
Mr. Benbury?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Ms. Schramke?
No.
Mr. Shadle?
No.
Chair Chrisillas?
No. Ms. Schramke, are you ready to read the next item of business?
I move that this commission receive and file the application of Labor's Local 1214 for the proposed re-subdivision of property located at 1405, 1413, 1415, and 1429 South Third Street. I further move that the requested approval be given and compliance with all other applicable provisions of the Paducah subdivision ordinance be waived.
Oh, I need a second. Thank you.
Second by you.
[laughing] Chair Shadle.
Yes.
Yes.
I think he's bringing us a bigger one, so that's a good thing.
Yeah. Let me share this.
Yeah, we're good.
No, make sure.
Basically, this is part of the original Jersey City addition, which was probably done sometime in the early 1900s, or 28-foot lots. There has been, through the years, quite a bit of conveyances and off conveyances which resulted in some irregular lots. Labor Hall has owned, and they own about four deeds, or I think they have five total deeds here. They own the entire block and the two separate ones. At this time, we want to request that this be made into one lot, so that will simplify their tax bill, and they may have some plans for adding one. The other lots, we're not going to do at this time, because I think we have some plans on purchasing additional property, and if it does, and the lower block will end up back here again.
Are they vacant? This lot and this lot?
This lot is vacant. These, this lot is vacant, this lot is vacant. I think they're planning on attempting to purchase some of the property, but I don't know, you know, if that may or may not happen. But right now, this is two lots in the Jersey Edition 2726. Really, he said the only thing that they're planning for, you know, was at the time, are open floor parking, and so it doesn't require anything. But, you know, he's, I was talking to him, he said, "I really don't know what I'm paying taxes on, because they've got deeds of this area and deeds of this area." So we're trying to simplify this there.
Yeah, he wouldn't, if you bought the Hammond's property, you wouldn't necessarily have to come back here as long as you didn't build across the building line.
Well, I, when was this built? I know they're planning for purchasing. I don't know if they've got it done yet. I didn't want to...
Long before we care.
They get by, we'll probably come back, and so I didn't want to, you know...
But you don't have to, is what I'm saying.
Right. Well, I think he was talking about a parking lot and maybe a picnic area or something. I don't know. That's not required. Regardless, they don't own it yet, so when they do, they may or may not be back.
Right. Now, that will take a site plan, of course. You know, a parking layout.
Well, that will be, that's in the future. You don't know.
I got something.
But as you can tell by all the lines, there are, you know, there started off nine lots in here, and then it's been divided into three deeds, and so it's very confusing about what they own and everything. So we're trying to sort that out and make it one lot.
I'm just trying to envision 100 years ago, little houses on those.
Yes.
Little shotgun.
Yeah, little 40-foot lots.
Did he say 28?
26.
Yeah.
The original lots were 28 feet.
Oh, really?
And then, and as you can tell, see, they provided, there's actually three lots that run this way, that's now divided out that way. So, there's been lots of activities through the years, you know, pretty big guys, so we're trying to clean it up some.
Good.
Strange one, right, for sure.
Anyone have any questions? Anything you'd like to ask? I assume they have no plans to close the alley, correct? Do you have any more comments? I guess we're ready for the vote, then. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Schramke?
Aye.
Mr. Shadle?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Benbury?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Chair Casillas?
Aye. If there's no other business to come before the commission, we stand adjourned.